Good evening, calling the meeting of Triton Board of Education to order, August 25th, 2025, 5:30 PM, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of.
Roll call please.
Gerald Trueheart.
Present.
Denise Johnson.
Present.
Jean Bowie.
Present.
Addie Daniels Lane, absent. Austin Edwards.
Present.
Yolanda Lopez.
Present.
Larry Trailer.
Present.
Jeannie Weakland, absent. We have a quorum.
New Jersey sun signed law, New Jersey Public Meeting's law was enacted to ensure the rights to the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted on. On the rules of this act, the Triton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting by publicizing the date, time, and place, therefore posted on the website, The Times, and The Star Ledger. Formal action will take place at this meeting. Mission statement, all students graduate with a vision for the future, motivated, and continually prepared to succeed in a choice of college or career. Motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Probably moved and seconded. Roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bowie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane, absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland, absent. Motion passed.
Move right into superintendent remarks followed by board committee chair reports. Thank you, in that order.
Good evening, and welcome everyone on this beautiful fall evening. We're at fall now. It's not blazing hot anymore, even though the air went out early this morning, I thought, well, it's cooler. I didn't get but one call, and that was Mr. Mosley, so we survived, but they were able to get it working again. Just want to thank everyone for joining us, and just want to take a minute to congratulate and celebrate with our county teacher of the year, Ms. Shakita Fennell. She is the... Ms. Fennell is the Mercer County Teacher of the Year, and Trenton has the second consecutive county teacher of the year, so we're so proud. I had an opportunity to go to TCNJ College of New Jersey and join Ms. Fennell, Ms. Bathea, her principal, and the county teachers of the year, and spend some time celebrating with them on August 12th of 2025, so we're really excited. Ms. Fennell will join us at next month's board meeting so that we can recognize her and celebrate with her, so just wanted to share that information. Moving forward to cellphone use in school, I understand there was a hefty debate on social media regarding the use of yonder pouches, and so we appreciate the input that many of our community members and students and parents may have shared. We're really excited about the direction we're taking regarding cell phones and cellphone use and the disruption that it can cause for student learning in buildings, and so we're taking this step. We don't have any intent to pivot. We believe it's important, we did not ban cell phones, we thought it was important for young people to hold on to them, and the yonder pouch structure or strategy gives us an opportunity for them to hold on to their cellphone, however, not be disrupted during the learning process. So we're very excited that we have now purchased all of, if I'm not correct, the yonder pouches, they should be in. We're meeting with principals, and we will have an immediate rollout in some buildings and a slower rollout, giving some schools some time to reach out to students, those where it may not have been done before. Just so that the public and anyone listening is aware, the ninth grade academy has been using yonder pouches and has had this cellphone practice in place for now two years. One of our other schools, Capital City High School, which used to be Daylight Twilight, has also used this process. It turns out that we see less issues regarding the cellphone when they're not in possession of them and have access during the school day, so we're excited about that process and look forward to continuing throughout the district. And we, as it stands, we're planning to implement this structure grades four through 12, and I know that some of our elementary principals have reached out kind of early to say, when do we get to do it, but we think we can manage it at first to second grade, first, second, and third grade levels, but who knows, cell phones are used early nowadays, so the only other announcement is central registration is open. We announce each time Monday through Friday, eight to four. We've had a steady stream of students and families coming in the building to register. We will continue that through registration and for the foreseeable future. Registration is held at this building, any transfers and things like that, depending on, if you're transferring from charter to charter, you have to do it here, but you can transfer at your school if needed. We do have several night events taking place and a Saturday event for registration coming up on August 26th and 27th, which is tomorrow and Wednesday. We will have late registration from 4:30 to 7:30 in this building for families who need that time of day to come in, and also we have a Saturday registration coming up on September 6th for anything we missed and any late, early registrations, but remember, registration is still open from eight to four every day, and we have registration staff available to support you along with administrative staff if necessary. We wish you all, families, our students, our staff, and our teachers, new staff, as they join us, a healthy and happy start to the school year. Thank you.
So move right into our committee reports. I'll start with the board president's reports. I just wanted to share the board, last board meeting, our retreat was, took the place of our governance committee meeting. We did discuss our next five-year strategic plan for 2031, those years. We will be working together to decide, Mary Ann Freeman was here, our New Jersey School Board Association field rep will work with her to decide, as we deliberate together, decide which plan we want to go with. It looks like it's going to be a hybrid of the two, different scenarios and plans and strategies that she shared with us at the last, at our board retreat, so we hope to have that accomplished and decided on by our September board meeting. We also discussed our district goals, as well as our superintendent goals and our board goals, so we'll have that crystallized, looking ahead to crystallize by our next board meeting. And then also, just wanted to share one thing, just really looking forward to September, the start of the school year. We have some great, some great work happening over the summer, and teachers and staff and faculty working together, professional development activities, and students involved in summer programs, doing great work across the district, preparing for, I saw the pictures on Instagram and Facebook and the website, so I've seen the evidence of the work that's been taking place over the summer, and we're looking forward to a prosperous and productive school year coming up in September, and superintendent, superintendent's leadership, I'm sure that's going to happen smoothly. Heard about registration just now, and great work on registration in terms of giving our parents the opportunities, different opportunities to come and to register with our district, and so I think we're in a good place for the start of the school year, so thank you so much. We'll now go on to teaching and learning. Yolanda, thank you.
So the Teaching and Learning Committee met on August 19th. We had two presentations on pilot programs that will be initiated this September. One of the programs was presented by Mr. Velazquez, and it is called Senedge. It, I'm sorry, it's for seventh and eighth graders. It works around, it is all about English language development for multilingual learners. The program is a differentiated program, and it is aligned to the WITUP standards and research-based. It targets two schools, Martin Luther King Jr. and the Holland Middle School. It also includes phonics instruction. The test results for access will determine if the program has been sufficiently progressive for our students. The second presentation was by Ms. Coons, and the focus on this pilot program is on integrating literacy and social studies and how we use the core resource through school-wide content and literacy units. In other words, combining reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills through social studies content. It will also be standards-based, both English and social study standards are addressed together, and the initial target is for fourth grade at the Joyce Kilmer Intermediate Foundation will be had from September through January, then the pilot will begin during the third marking period. Fourth marking period will be the assessment on the program. Special education updates, SC has been concluded with a, they had a celebratory program. The summer child study work has, for the month of July, was concluded, and out of 253 cases, 139 were found to be eligible, although there have been more cases that have been referred since July. There were some parents reaching out with concerns about transition, about two families, and they were satisfied with the answers given, and placement letters have gone out for the upcoming school year. Also, middle schools have created hubs for special education students, and what they have done now is concentrate resources, so we will have all students for autism meeting at Keene, the multiple disabilities at Dunn, and the intellectual disabilities at Holland. Finally, we reviewed the resolutions and amendments. We spoke about the goal of number, I'm sorry, I cannot read this here now. Wow, one word just threw me off, and I can't read it. Ladder, goal.
Ladder, goal, numbers, something will be indicated.
We will talk about how to integrate and transform skills into reality, or some type of project or presentation. This is for the education equity advisors, and the upcoming stuff that deals with travel was also highlighted. That was basically it for the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting.
Thank you, Yolanda. Jean Bowie?
Yes, we, the Finance and Operations Committee also met on the 19th. We reviewed transfers, the secretary's report, the treasurer's report, staff travel, and the bill list, and we paid $36,376,594 for bills from July 31st through August 15th. Additionally, we reviewed requests for proposals and grants, and this is probably the real highlight for me every time I give an update, the donations that people give to our children. And so the first one is Mercer Street Friends via Send Hunger Packing Program, $100,000 donation to Trenton Board of Education. Donations will supply weakened food packages to be provided to various Trenton Public School students selected for a Send Hunger Packing Program at all elementary and middle schools for the 2025-2026 school year. Costco's donation of $500 to Dunn. Costco's a donation of $3,750 to Dunn, and the donations for that $3,750 is for 250 book bags to students at Dunn. Catholic Charities, 1,000 books valued at $7,500 for family and community engagement. Johnson &amp; Johnson School Supplies and Backpacks valued at $2,500 for family and community Barrow Mayo Church School Supplies, $750 to family and community engagement. Girl Scouts, 500 books valued at $1,500 for family and community engagement. MSF, diapers, wipes, maxi pads valued at $500 to family and community engagement. And last, Shine &amp; Inspire Self-Care Products valued at $500 to Kilmer, and we thank all of the generous contributions to our children.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Mr. Trailer, facilities?
Yes, thank you. The facilities committee met on August 19th, 2025, and we went over, discussed some capital maintenance projects, including the Ziegler Warehouse Building. The building has been fully abated, and all utilities from PSENG and Trenton Water has been disconnected. The permits for the demolition has been picked up, and the contractor should be scheduled to start at the end of August, and the project completion should be scheduled for October of 2025. In addition, we're getting a new elevator added at Harrison School. The permit was submitted and is awaiting DOE release, and Department of Education is reviewing comments, and hopefully the work will be completed, well, the work in the classrooms will be completed and operational prior to the start of the 2025-2026 school year, and work in the common areas, public spaces will run concurrently with the stair elevator addition of the project. There is continued work around the renovation alternation, alteration at the ninth grade academy. There was a kickoff meeting held on 7/29. Work has not started yet, still waiting on the DOE, but we're, you know, waiting for, you know, to mobilize ASAP, and the construction will occur, hopefully Phase One will begin at the end of this month, and construction will occur while the school is in session with Phase One, beginning at the basement. There's a barrier that's going to be set up to keep dust and debris out of the hallways and classrooms to ensure student health is maintained, and the project will be estimated to take one and a half years, a year and a half. In addition, Monument and McKnight has some wall installations done, all the frames and drywalls are 100%. There's some work continuing to wrap up around flooring and painting and ceilings, but in addition, new playgrounds have been completed in five schools, a concession stand at Trenton Central High School has been completed, and the tent extension at Trenton Central High School has been completed as well, so they're just waiting for furniture to arrive. That's the end of the facilities report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trailer. Mr. Austin, human resources?
All right, human resources.
Edwards, you called you, Mr. Austin, Mr. Edwards.
All good, I forgive you, brother. So we, with the Human Resource Committee, have been meeting and meeting again, literally week after week, we've been going over and just checking those who are coming into the district, and especially want to highlight the section that I both love and hate at the same time, right, the new hires that are coming in, right? I love it because, as you can see, there are about two or three pages of people that are coming into the district and really giving back to our children in various capacities. I hate it because I sit back and I'm just like, I don't know why I didn't become a science teacher, because listen, people are clearing figures out here, clearing really high figures, but the point is that we're making a point to attract really great talent into the district so they can be beneficial, not just for our families, our community, but specifically for our children. So I'm very excited to have so many people coming in, starting up this fall. Additionally, my second favorite, to an extent, section is the retirements, not because, you know, glad to see anybody go, but just to see the amount of people who've been with the district for such a long time. As you can see in our retirement section, granted, it's only one person, but 34 years of service with the district, which really highlights that we're doing something great here, that people want to be a part of, year after year after year. And so that's the primary highlights for this specific section. Looking forward to beginning the school year strong and welcoming more people in as the school year goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. That concludes our comments on board committee chair reports. We'll move on, no public participation tonight. Board members will move on to board discussion, action on consent agenda. First, I'd like us to move to approve, and then we'll move to questions once we have the first and the second.
So moved.
So moved.
Probably moved and seconded. Any questions and discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Gerald Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bowie.
Yes.
Addie Daniels Lane, absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland, absent. Motion passed.
Any board member comments for tonight? Mr. Bowie?
Yeah, I have two. So just kind of piggybacking off of what Brother Austin said about the number of people coming to work in the district, I think what really makes, I think the new hires, I think there were 60 people in attendance to the new hires training, right? And out of that 60 people, 27 were experienced teachers, which means that our brand has improved so that people are attracted to the offering and working for the school district, so kudos to the superintendent and his team, because that's a big deal. I remember, Gerald and I go back a long time, people weren't coming to this school district, so it speaks volumes of the progress. And I would say that the next thing that is really cool, and I didn't mention it during the operations update, but our transportation has improved at to such a level, and we've been able to fund buses so that we can now actually rent our services out to other places for the use of our buses, which generates revenue, and so for those who have no, let me give some context to this content. When I got here nine years ago in October, we had three rickety buses in the parking lot that didn't run. We were at the mercy of transportation vendors, right? So some folks remember those days, right? And so Jane, who was a BA at the time, and Fred McDowell, who was the superintendent, said that the only way that we could provide our own transportation was by tear opening the school. was by tear opening the schools. So if any of you were around, you remember the board meetings where we caught a lot of heck, um, because we had to open high schools at seven-thirty, middle schools at eight, and elementary at eight-thirty, right? Well, well, it allowed us to buy ten buses. We have over ninety state-of-the-art buses right now, transporting our children everywhere. And, and, and what's really cool about this is the money that was saved helped to buy the Ninth Grade Academy for twenty million dollars cash, not axing the taxpayers for a dime. So, so when I heard the operations meeting that we're now renting out buses, that's something to get really excited about. So, so those are, those are, those are two points. And then, and then I have one more point. I sit on the, I also sit on the, uh, teaching and learning committee, and when I listen, um, to the progress that our children are making, that's real progress because it's all about growth. And so, so just again, superintendent, I really commend you and your team for the work, um, because I've been a witness of the transformation, right? And that's a big deal. So that's my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Mr. Austin?
Yeah, just, uh, Edwards, but, only because you wanted to correct yourself. Um, but yeah, I just want to say I'm very excited, uh, for this Friday. Uh, for those who are unaware, this is the back-to-school extravaganza that we're going to have, uh, right here at our central office, uh, from ten to two. Uh, I know I'm going to be there, uh, making sure that there's a table available, uh, for any resources, anyone that's, uh, willing to register to vote, going to have that there. Um, but, uh, really excited because it allows the community to come together. I know, um, everybody and their mama and their great uncle and they, you know, everybody they know is having a, uh, back-to-school backpack drive, but like, this is the event where everyone can come and get all of the resources you need in a one-stop shop. So really looking forward to this Friday, and, uh, tell everybody that you know, tell your mama and tell your uncle, tell everybody, all right? Come on out this Friday and, uh, uh, get what you need.
Yolanda or Larry or Denise, any, any comments? No. Mr. Earl?
Just, just want to thank the board. On the agenda this evening were two, uh, curriculum office or teaching and learning supervisors. They joined us this evening. I just wanted to recognize them. They brought their families. This is really exciting. It goes along with what we, uh, are talking about, building that culture of high expectations here for students and staff. Um, but our two new supervisors, Rachel, Rachel Gagliardo, uh, is intermediate humanities, world language, and gifted and talented. Please stand. And Mr. Robert Keys is our visual and performing arts supervisor. So we're excited to have you with us. Congratulations.
Amen. That's wonderful. Congratulations once again, yes. Um, I wanted to echo Austin. I want, uh, you board members, you notice like, this is the tenth anniversary of our extravaganza. This is, it's been ten years that we've been doing the extravaganza. So kudos to these, uh, school support and community engagement area, Denise Crease and her team, and of course, uh, Mr., our superintendent, but ten years, that's, that's a testimony to the work that's been going on in the city of Trenton. Uh, as Mr. Bowie said, uh, we do great things in the city, and we're attracting great people, and so we welcome you to our district and look forward to the work that you're going to be doing under our superintendent and his leadership team. So thank you so much, and we, I'm sure our students are going to be engaged with you and our teachers and, uh, teaching and learning, uh, assistant superintendent will keep you very, very busy. So, so God, God bless you. We're going to move into executive session. No new business, guys? We went through that already. That's done. Executive session. Whereas Open Publics Meeting Act codified as NJSA ten four dash colon four dash six permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting under certain circumstances, and whereas the Trenton Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, indicated as follows: Any material considered confidential by federal law, state statute, or court rule, any pending anticipated litigation or contract negotiations to which the board or is or may become a party to, and any matter falling within the attorney-client privilege to the extent that the confidentiality is required to preserve the attorney-client relationship and allow the attorney to exercise his or her ethical duties as a lawyer. Matters captioned: Approval of twenty-five twenty-six administrated contract, Julius Clark Assistant Superintendent for School Support, disposition of property, settlement in a matter of N, AN versus TBOE, settlement in a matter of MM versus TBOE, now therefore be resolved by the Trenton Board of Education, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey. That executive session will be held on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five for the tax-truly permissible purposes indicated in this resolution. Be it therefore resolved, the action may be taken by the board when it reconvenes the open session. Be it finally resolved, that the minutes of the executive session with regard to the above subject matter shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interest of the parties involved, no longer adverse to the public interest, or does not endanger any individual rights to privacy. Motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Roll call?
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jean Bowie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane, absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland, absent. Move to executive session.
Executive session.
We're back in open public session. We'll start with number one, approval of 2025-26 administrative contract.
I make the motion to approve the assistant superintendent contract.
A second.
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Buie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland absent. Motion passed.
Our second matter, caption, disposition of property.
I motion that we approve the disposition of property.
Is there a second? Proper move and second, it will call.
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Buie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland absent. Motion passed.
Item number four, settlement of matter of MM versus TBOE.
I move to settle the, I'm sorry, what's the language again?
Settlement of the matter of MM versus TBOE.
I'm sorry. I move this settlement, thank you. I move the settlement in the matter of MM versus Trenton Port of Education.
I will second.
Proper move and second, it will call.
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Buie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane absent. Austin Edwards.
Yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland absent. Motion passed.
Item number five, the motion to amend the agenda to include the acceptance of 130,000 donation from Douglas Palmer for Trenton Literature Movement.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second, it will call.
Joel Trueheart.
Yes.
Denise Johnson.
Yes.
Jeanne Buie.
Yes.
Eddie Daniels Lane absent. Austin Edwards.
Absolutely, yes.
Yolanda Lopez.
Yes.
Larry Trailer.
Yes.
Jeannie Weakland absent. Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. Meeting adjourned.